That again, again. Let's begin our meeting. A warm good morning to everyone. It definitely is warm because we are but somewhere is far away from us because we are within our houses. We cannot go outside anywhere. So summer is there, but we don't have any summer. And that's very sad. At the same time, it's very surprising. Welcome to everyone in our 157th meeting of Agora Speakers Nepal. Before we start our official meeting, there are a few housekeeping rules that we really need to know. Because this, this, these housekeeping rules will help us to, to conduct or and organize the meeting in a smooth manner. So the first thing is if you're, there are, there are differences in the housekeeping rules when we do it physically and there are a few changes when we, when we are doing it here in the Zoom. So the first, first is that let's try to have a very calm and quiet place where we can listen to the speakers. Next thing, if you're not speaking, make sure that your mic is muted. The other thing is make sure that you don't have a very blurry background or you don't have a very shaky stand for camera. Next thing, there are a few reactions you can do to support or you can raise your hand to, to make the meeting leader see you and if you want to talk, right? So these are the few housekeeping rules. We definitely have to improvise a lot of things because we are connected through internet and this is really not equally as smooth as doing it physically. So without wasting any time, I would like to call our meet, I think we don't have our meeting facilitated today. So let's, let me call to the president. I would like to call ES Pawan Josi, our, our very energetic president to officially start the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Agora Speakers Sabin for giving me this platform and good morning all of you. On behalf of Kachmeri Speakers Club, I would like to welcome all the members, all the guests, all the members from various club in the meeting. I hope you all will follow housekeeping goals that our secretary already said to you. And good morning once again. To conduct this kind of meeting, we always need an effective meeting leader who can control all the meeting, who can fulfill all the roles and who can energize all the meeting and who is really enthusiastic. And again, today in our 157th meeting, we have Agora Speaker Yogendra Khattiyura as a meeting leader. Talking about Agora Speaker Yogendra Khattiyura, he is really energetic. He can make you laugh, he can motivate you, he can persuade you, he can mentor you. And I hope he will do same today during the meeting. Without much delay, please help me welcome Agora Speaker Yogendra Khattiyura. Agora Speaker Yogendra, the flow is yours.
Thank you, President. Thank you for the introduction, the nice introduction. I didn't know whether I am in that position, but your words made me to feel so. So good morning, everyone. And welcome to this another wonderful online meeting of Agora Speakers Nepal Kachmeri Speakers Club. The day is very nice. You can see from the window, you can feel it and you, you can give that charm to the another person. That's why today I have chosen the theme of the day, sharing solution. Let's not only talk about the problem, not share the difficulties, but if we have the idea to make others smile, to make others feel that good time is coming, you are feeling so. And what I am requesting everyone that let's be the part of solution. I'm not telling the another world coming together. So let's be the part of solution. Let's discuss somehow, how can we share the ideas to make the movement more lightly? The life could be more enjoyable, more learning, more sharing and more caring. With this, I am the meeting leader of today's Agora Meeting Kachmeri Speakers Club. We have leaders and role takers to lead the, lead the meeting. Entirely, I will facilitate the meeting. And we have three sessions to go. First, the hot topic session where our hot topic master speaker Nirmala is ready with her hot topics smilingly. And next, the prepare speech session where our prepared speakers are lined up to give their views, express their ideas. And the last one is evaluation session where our meeting evaluator will facilitate that, that session. So before that, let's discuss on the theme of the meeting that is sharing solution. We all know that we are in a but thinking about difficulties, thinking about problems and sharing those ideas is not the good idea, good solution. So what could be the good idea that can spend your time that most? Everyone. Yeah, anyone? Sharing solutions. For example, how your days start? How is your whole day spent? And how does your day ends? How does your day end at the last of the day? So anyone can express their views. Yeah, anyone? I would like to request Speaker Ravi. Can you share a few words about it?
So given to say, how do we? It's been a day. But was, the theme is sharing solution, right?
Yes.
Okay. In this lockdown, what we are doing, a couple of us is in the afternoon, middle of the afternoon, we meet for an hour. And the quality process, you know, we, we are a team of nearly 20. And we are regularly talking about how we can enhance our service and product in our career. The quality starts with the notion of identifying problem that we are facing, analyzing the root causes of the problem that we face and work on the root causes to mitigate the problem so that we can build up the best of the solution. That is fundamental notion of quality, identifying the problem, analyzing them and solving it. That, that is a quality practice, but at top of it, we, we build professional solutions. I guess that is a practice that we are into for last more than eight weeks. And if we inculcate that concern among us, so we can find a great solution starting at the same basic premises. That must I would like to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ravi sir, for sharing that how can, how you can make your time a qualitative one, sharing with your friends and relatives. Now I would like to request Speaker Sagar all the way from Bhutwal, the president of Bhutwal Agora Club. I would like to request you for sharing some words.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Yogendra. Generally during this days of lockdown, the major problem, you know, I have always in my hand and had are the, you know, the problem will be facing up as soon as the lockdown. There may be a problem for the, you know, groceries item. So I have been quite engaged with the, you know, agri business right now. Getting, sharing ideas regarding agri business. Like we do have a trend of Kousi Ketti in Kachmandu, especially in Kachmandu area where the people do not have land. But utilizing their rooftop to grow some vegetables so they were, they do not have to suffer a lot or they won't be facing a, a problem when there is a shortage of. So I'm trying my best to gather this kind of ideas and sharing with their friends as well as my community. So upcoming future, if we do have a problem regarding, you know, any kind of blockade or any kind of shortage in the supplies of groceries, so we do not have to suffer a lot. So these are the things I'm quite engaged with during the lockdown session.
Thank you, Speaker Sagar for sharing that. The beautiful idea is growing vegetables at the, at the rooftop of your house. And that is a very nice idea for sharing. And now I would like to request all the guests, please be prepared in between. We are talking about this theme of the day. And I'm looking some guesses, Sanjay, Gimey, Sabin, Gartola, Sachin, Tandan and Smita, Lital. I would like to request them and Lal, Rana, please actively participate in the meeting. And now I would like to move on to our regular session. First of all, I would like to introduce the role takers of the day. First of all, we have, we are different role takers for the benefits of the guest. We have grammarian, we have feeler word counter, we have timer, we have meeting evaluators, we have hot topic master, we have speakers and evaluators lined up. So first of all, I would like to request today's grammarian speaker Pratik Sharma to highlight your roles and introduce the word of the day.
Good morning, everyone. Today I'm going to be the grammarian of this meeting. So the role that I have taken grammarian, what does it do? Now grammarian's job is simple. I'll have to look at all the grammar grammatical mistakes or, you know, grammatically incorrect sentences that you use and devise a strategy to how to make your, make your grammar better. I won't be saying specific names of who spoke what, but rather an overall overview of the meeting about how grammatically correct or incorrect you were. And also if I find any, I'll be noting down some good uses of grammar or interesting uses of grammar. And as well as my job will also be to count how many people use the word of the day. The word of the day today is ushuk, ushukdik. Ushukdik which is, which means extremely idealistic, unrealistic and impractical. You can switch out this word for impractical and use it also. It works just as fine. Now an example, a vast and perhaps ushukdik project. You could also say impractical project, but this is a more of a exotic word, let's say. So every time you use the word of the day or anybody else uses the word of the day, I request everybody to give them a round of applause using the reaction button below. So that's me. Thank you. Back to the meeting table.
Thank you, Pratik, for introducing the word of the day. Now I would like to request our feeler word counter speaker Rekha to highlight your role.
Good morning, everyone. Today I am feeler word counter. I'm coming back with a report. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Rekha for introducing your role. Now I would like to request today's timer speaker Kinzel to highlight your role.
So in today's meeting, I'm going to take the role of timer and I'll be reporting your timing report. And if I'll show you this green card, then that means you have reached your first time limit. And if I show you the yellow card, that means you have to, and you have to give a statement, end statement line of your speech. If I show you the red card, that means you have reached the time limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Kinzel. Kinzel is repeatedly taking this timing role and she has been mastering in this in this role, I think she's doing very nice. Now I would like to request today's meeting evaluator, Speaker Manuja Diputa. She is also the secretary of Agora Speakers Bhutwal.
Thank you, yes, Yogendra sir. And good morning, everyone. So today I'm taking the role of overall evaluator. As we all know that overall evaluation is divided into three sections. That is direct evaluation, where I'll be evaluating the speech session along with the speakers and the. And the second one is in direct, evaluating the hot topic session and then grammarian counter. And then I'll be evaluating the overall meeting evaluation. I will be doing the overall evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Manuja for introducing your role. And today we have a hot topic master as well and we have three speakers. The one, the first is Sabin Karel is giving his space and second, the speaker Subrat Paudal is giving his space. And I would like to request Speaker Ravi to be ready to evaluate Subrat Paudal's speech. I will be highlighting some objectives to you in your chat box shortly. And the next one is one educational speech by our president speaker Pawan Josi. So before that, before that, I would like to jump into hot topic session today. Our very beautiful lady who is always be ready to take the lead, take the role and always ready to speak and give the different kind of views from her own feelings, says not other than speaker Nirmala Kisi who is ready to give, to lead the hot application. Without further ado, I would like to welcome speaker Nirmala to conduct the hot topic session. Over to you.
First of all, good morning to everybody and widely welcome in this Zoom platform. Thank you for the meeting leader, Agorian Speaker Yogendra Khattiyura for giving me the, this sessions to handle. Today I am a hot topics master. Today the surrounding is very cool. Then also we all make our sessions hot. I have altogether three questions. This hot topic session is especially designed in our club for the guest. Guests are allowed to give answer and others Agorian participant are also. But in these sessions, any speaker who, who are, who, who come inside this Zoom platform can consent about the time management, which is handled by the Kinzel sister. When the initial time was started, the, the green card will be shown. At that time, one minute is gone and over. That is consent about the speaker who can give the answer. Then when one and a half minute is gone, at that time a low card will be shown by the Kinzel sister. At the last, when the time is over, the red card will be shown. At that time, if anybody cannot stop their giving view, all the Agorian can clap the hand and stop to, stop the sessions. So at the fourth, I want to give, I am to, I want to give that question. That topics. That topics is sharing the problem. Sharing the problem.
Yeah, anyone among the guests or?
Would like give as, or among the guests and other are also who are interested to give some view and offering, sharing problem.
I'll talk on this topic. I think this, yeah, I think this topic is designed for Speaker Rosni or Tulazaman.
Widely welcome to the Rosni Pandey to give our, our opinion in this topic. Give big hand to the, to the card. Rosni ma'am, your sound is low, voice is low.
Yes, now it's all about.
Yeah, I have some problems in my phone. Okay, let's start again. So it's about sharing your problem or solution. But in this pandemic, pandemic situation, we need to know that what's the value of time? And we have really, we have really reached at the moment of our life when we had aware about the situation or whatever the situation will be. So in this condition, I think it's my perspective that we should utilize our time, our, now our skills so that we can do something important in our life and also we can suggest others to do in their life, implement in their life. As we know, if they are suffering from something related to, relating to their career or their life. So sharing your solution, sharing solution is like something which is related to peace of mind. If we hear someone or if we suggest someone something, then it means that you are promoting them or you are helping them to overcome their issues, their difficulties. So it's important to be there and no, no one is there and share your problem and share your solution to someone who really, who really hear you, who can really uplift you in your situations. So whatever the condition is, let's share the solution which is best in that way. Even though we can't share the best one, but we still can be there and hear them. Like in this pandemic situation, I used to paint a lot because it's my hobby. And I was still busy in my daily stops, like in office work, in Agora meeting. So I would like to suggest everyone to be, to continue with their daily work and to utilize their time enough. That you never, you never get chance to regret that you have not done that thing which you can do. So this is, thank you so much. Up to you, Nirmala Kisi ma'am.
Nirmala ji, unmute yourself. First unmute yourself.
Thank you for the Rosni Pandey for your constructive and meaningful opening given on the topic sharing problem. That is very, very, very realistic and idealistic in this, in this Zoom platform. Then another, another topic I want to throw is fear of the death.
Sorry, can you repeat?
Fear of the death.
Yeah, fear of dying.
Fear of death.
Death, yes, fear of the death.
Speaker Sachin, I think he's ready to speak.
Yeah, I think a death is something that gives meaning to life. So once not afraid of death, but once you're very aware of living, how to live. I guess if you are more conscious about how should, who is live, then there will be very less fear of death. I will listen to you.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a part of life and if we take it very, very shortening, we are like when, I remember when Satvir said, if we know we are immortal, then we will be a very, we will live a very happy and prosperous life. If you know we are a very, very mortal person. Because mortality is what gives a meaning to life and the time that we have in this world. So I would like to end up my speech at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Agorian Speakers. You have give your view on fear of the death. Death and life are the two parts of life that is very concerned, very, very good view, I think that. At, at, at last, but the not, but the not, but not the least. The topic is love yourself. Love yourself.
Speaker Tulazan, mute yourself and go on.
Widely welcome in this platform for the Agorian Speaker Tulazan to give her opinion in these topics. Thank you.
Love is essential. More, others more than ourselves. If we love ourselves, we can love others. If we don't know how to love ourselves, we cannot love others, others, anyone in the world. Anyone, any people, any animal, anything. So we have to learn from ourselves to love. Bravely, bravely and strongly, we can say help and do something better for others. If we are weak, we ourselves are weak. In every, every and each aspect of our life, we cannot help each other person. So we have to learn our, love ourselves first. That doesn't mean it should be, we should be selfish. No, no, not. We have to love ourselves. That is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for, for your good opinion in this. Thank you for, for your good opening in this, in this topics. Uh, you, all the participant Agurin speaker can, can give their view. QC, QC, some are QC fix, QC fix and some are not. So I want to give, I want to hand over these sessions to the meeting leader, Yogi Khatiyoda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Nirmalaji, for conducting a beautiful hot topic session. You know, everyone, one thing that every time Nirmalaji comes, that one topic will be about related to love, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think so.
Is that every time she, she comes with that idea? And everyone during hot topic session, they share their views about that when I selecting my theme, that is sharing solution, one very nice quotation is there, sharing your problem is making half and sharing your joys is making double. How many of you believe in this quote? How many of you believe on this? Sharing your, yes.
I think, uh, sharing should matter.
Yes, sharing your problems is making half, sharing your joys.
I think we should be very conscious about who to, who we are sharing. We should be very conscious about that because some people may find witness and use it against us. So we should be very conscious about that.
Yes, and, and in recent days, what I have learned is the two things, two things. There is, one is busy body and the next one is easy mind. Have you got my idea? The busy body and the easy mind. So your mind must always be very easy, very frank and you can enjoy. So moving on to our next level, next session, that is prepared speech session. And today, three speakers are ready to express their views and ideas and give some solution to life. So today, first speaker, our own speaker, speaker Sabin, who is always ready to take the lead, talking about himself. You can see him as the different one, you can see him physically, if you, if you if you see him, he is not in that open, but frankly speaking, while you are with him, while he is sharing his internal views, he is a very frank, very leading personality. Always he comes with the idea, gives the solution and make people think about it that he is talking about meaningful things. So he is also this, also the secretary of our club. And now I would like to request him to come to the stage and he is giving his second project from speech basis and he is going to evaluate by speaker Sagar Gautam. Now I would like to request Sagar to focus on his speech. And now I would like to request speaker Sabin to come to the stage and give his, give your speech on your lovely topic. Welcome, so everyone please welcome him.
It's wonderful that I'm ready with a speech and this, this speech is really very close to my heart and I would really want to share, he's not just within our group but beyond that. Thank you again, let me start with saying, life is not a fairy tale, life is not, or it doesn't have a straight pathway, life is hard, life is sad, life is melancholy, life is at the same time happy. So all in all, life is a combination of every good things and every bad thing. Our strength is what defines how we live our life. It makes us believe that the way we want to live is the right way we want to live. Our weakness is not an excuse, our weakness is not a source of sympathy. So be strong, be strong so that no wind whips you out. Be strong that no rain drenches you out and no cold pierce your heart. There are two ways of living your life, either you be strong or you be destroyed. In all situation, your strength and determination will benefit you. Humans are lucky that they can choose how they want to live their life. On the other hand, animals are bound to live the way they have been designed to. But we, we have the priority, we have the way we, we can look forward to live our life. You either be a lion or be a vulture, that's where she is yours. You fail in exam, someone broke your heart, you didn't succeed, you are broken, you are, you're sad, you're a loser. You're unwanted, you're merely just a part of a useless crowd. How do you get out? How do you prove that you are someone? How do you prove that you exist and how do you prove that you're worthy of living? How do you prove your existence? How do you make your parents proud? Well, you wonder how, there are solutions and the best solution is that be strong. Be strong to the point that nobody can break you, be strong to the point where you are wanted, be strong to the point that where you know that you exist in the world and you know that people see you for motivation. Becoming strong is very hard, but first start it with your mental strength. Because as Lord Buddha said, you become what you think. If you don't think that you're strong, you're never strong. But if you think you're strong, you definitely are strong. Developing your mental strength is the first thing to become stronger and determined. Let's take some examples of great leaders like Nelson Mandela. He was imprisoned, think about it, if he had not been strong with his mental status, he wouldn't have come out alive, he wouldn't have succeeded in making what he always thought was right. Let's take another example of Martin Luther King Junior. He was not a boxer, neither he was a wrestler, but he had the capacity to change the entire world. And this is not because of his physical strength, but his mental determination and strength. All there are heroes we have rising from the ashes. It's because they have the determination, because they have the power, because they have the willingness and it's all because they are mentally prepared that they are strong. Weaknesses are for learning, definitely it's not for keeping for a very long time. Weaknesses are good when we keep them for, for a very short period of time. Weaknesses are when we use the weaknesses to become strong. Weaknesses are good only when we are happy with that so that we can learn more about weaknesses and be strong. Your devastation and your willingness depend on how strong you mentally are. Either you rise from the ashes or you just get burned. Your strength determines your charismatic power. Your strength is what defines you to people. I see you as a great leader, not because you, you have a power, not because you have the capacity to influence people through your economic status, but because you have the power of controlling your mind, you have the power of changing people's minds through your strength. If, I would like to add on one more proverb from the Greek philosophy. If the cow or the ox knew his strength, God help human beings. We know how strong a cow and, and an ox is, but it's not that we, it's not that it's determined to use its strength, but we human beings have the consciousness to use our power. Not just use our power, but to develop our power to the point where we know that no one can beat us. So be strong, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Sabin Karil for your nicest speech. After, after such a long, that we were expecting your speech like this. Now moving on to our next speaker. Our next speaker, very own personality or spiritual person, a positive thinker, an entertainer and businessman by profession, he is our longtime friend, Speaker Subrat Paudel, whom I requested a speech, a spiritual and idea sharing speech just yesterday and he accepted my request and he is ready to give his speech. And what I believe is he is also giving his speech after long in Agora. And today, another request accepted by Speaker Robbie, who is always ready to evaluate and mentor us and he is there to evaluate Speaker Subrat Paudel's speech. I have already highlighted, I have already informed to Robbie sir for his ideas, what has given by Speaker Subrat Paudel. So he is here to give his speech, an idea whose time has come. An idea whose time has come, his time is eight to ten minutes, Speaker Subrat Paudel. Please help me welcoming him.
Thank you, thank you, so am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Okay, wonderful. So dear friends, I'd like to start with asking a question to every one of you. Have you ever wondered why some ideas in business or an idea of a political view works and some don't? Any answer to this? So if, if I may answer this question, because I, I find no one answering this, probably
I have one, I'm, yeah.
Okay, please.
Shall I put mine?
Yes, yes, yes.
It's mere, yeah, it's mere a lock, I mean, in the series of random events, it's a lock.
Okay, okay, so, so luck, I will take that into consideration. And they may, there might be many more reasons behind why an idea work, idea works and why it doesn't. So during this lockdown, if you take an example of this platform that we are in, which is Zoom. Now Zoom has emerged as a hot cake and if you see most of the members or most of the people, the political, the politicians to the business leaders have been using this platform to communicate with different members or communicate their ideas with the people around them. And if you look at the stock prices of Zoom, it has soared to the sky now. And now communicating through Zoom has become a new normal for most of us who are doing business, who are trying to, you know, leverage things to different people and trying to
No sound.
Not audible.
Sound is not coming.
Now just take a look at, we had these resources with us, we had online platforms with us. Probably I'll take an example of Zoom or there are many other platforms as well, Teams, Google Hangouts, but we weren't using it as we were supposed to use it. The reason behind that is simple, probably because the topic of my speech is an idea whose time has come. So probably at that point of time, I, I still see that even though I had the resources, I had downloaded this platform called Zoom, but still I was not using it. Now I'll take you a bit back to the history. The first Concorde flight was flown in the year nineteen sixty-nine and it was said to be the best plane, airplane manufactured in the entire civil aviation industry. The top speed of the Concorde was two hundred and two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine kilometers per hour. If you take a look at today's airplanes, it's way past the speed that we have today. It was the first supersonic passenger airline which operated till two thousand and three, a project that was designed by British French people. And there was not even a single crash that happened with Concorde, only a small incident in the runway. That, that too, due to a small metal that was not cleared by the ground staff. But if you take a look at today, aviation is only the industry, probably we are, the world is in that we are actually back when we already had technology, when we already had the resources, when we already had people flying though that airplane which is much more faster than what we are today. And by far, it was a profitable venture as well. In, even though it, the costs was, were high, but still it was a profitable venture. But still we had to go back to an older version of the, the, the speed that we have today. Now, I would like to come to my part, the things that I faced. I learned about physical activities in the year two thousand and eight and I started off with yoga in the year two thousand and eight and since twelve years I had been practicing. But until two thousand sixteen, before that it was just in and out, in and out, I was not that regular. And, and in between that time, it never, it never, I was never stuck that, you know, I should do it on a regular basis, but I was still doing it, but I didn't do it as regular as I wanted to do it. But after two thousand sixteen, things changed. Now I started getting much more serious about health, I started getting much more serious about, you know, I should be doing it in a regular basis. And two years, two years after that, I started going to the gym and when I saw people in the gym, I was awestruck. Even though twelve years back, I knew that I was already in that path of having a good health or working it out, but still why didn't I take it so seriously? Now, there might be many factors why behind, you know, why, when an idea comes, why don't we take it seriously? Probably because we think, we doubt that, you know, these things are not going to work. You know, if you take an example of different factors into account, there may be many factors why an idea whose time has not come. Probably we feel that this idea may work or may not work. And, you know, it said that things will happen to you at the right time and things will happen to the right people, nothing happens beforehand or maybe afterhand. And it will happen to the right person. Well, a famous, a famous motivational speaker said that opportunity knocks the door once, right? But for many other people, they've redefined this quotation, saying that, you know, if opportunity does not knocks the door, you can build a door for yourself. Now to conclude with, you know, this proverb which was said, was said by Mr. Victor Hugo of French poet. He said that nothing is powerful as an idea whose time has come. And he has rightly said that. Because as I gave so many examples of, of different technologies, a different, of different industries and that happened to myself as well. You know, I was practicing yoga for twelve years, but still, until four years back, I was not that serious and could not incorporate it regularly. So in everyone's life or any, everyone's lifespan, there is a time where suddenly an idea can click in. And that's the point where you have to materialize that idea into reality. And that's how you can actually, you know, make things happen. So I, from my part, I would like to request all the members to, you know, keep looking, keep searching for different things, different interesting things that could happen. Probably, you know, in this lockdown, there could be things that you might be just passing by. But if you take a look and, take a look in a microscopic way, little things, you know, you could, you could actually turn that little things into an idea that can really work and really revolutionize your entire life. And when you can revolutionize your entire life, probably, you know, you, the things that you are doing in your life can also be helpful in your professional life as well. So with that, always be out there to look out for new ideas and, and idea probably that can shape your life and change your life. So just be, just keep looking for that idea that can really change your life. So with that, I would like to end my speech. Over to you, over to Yogendraji.
Thank you, Speaker Subrat, for your nicest speech. That's why I always say everyone that Subrat comes with lots of ideas to implement in your life. Moving on to our next speaker, he is not other than our president, Speaker Pawan Josi, who is always ready to lead, ready to tackle the problems and the banker by profession and the very smiling personality. We are very longtime friends, together sharing ideas. And today, he is, he has come with the idea that the evaluation is very essence, very important in our speeches and in our everyday life. So he is here to give his speech in effective evaluation. His time is ten to twelve minutes. And help me welcoming him, the Speaker Pawan Josi, for effective evaluation.
Good morning all of you and thank you very, very much, our Speaker Yogendra for your wonderful, wonderful introduction. Have you ever been invited by your friends or relatives for dinner or lunch? And you went to their house, but what happens is you don't like the food cooked by them. And how will you respond to them? Simply saying, is this a food that you invited me for? Or even if you don't like it, you will say, wow, what a wonderful food. And there are two aspects for that. If you say it positively, even if you don't like the food and what happens, you know, you will end up eating the worst food always. And if you say you don't like that food, and again, you have to eat the same kind of food. So you have to make balance between the good and bad aspect. This is where the evaluation comes. You have to balance the good aspect and bad aspect and the response to your friend or relative as per the situation, so that you won't lose a friend and you will get to it often frequently. Talking about evaluation, the role of evaluation is to provide constructive feedback to the speaker. And evaluation, you know, evaluation is an opinion, nothing more. And the opinion should mention the effect on you, what the speaker did well, areas what the speaker could improve and any specific recommendation for improvement. And keep in mind that you cannot change the person's behavior or force a person to accept your ideas and suggest improvement. That's why I said, it's just your opinion and you should not expect that they should follow what you say. You know, each project in Agarastika International either basic or advanced has different purpose and different objective. And remember that you don't need to comment on every section of those question. There isn't enough time to cover all the question. Simply use or select two or three most important thing that are related directly to the objective. And be honest, if you don't like some aspect of the person's performance, do not say it. Do not say you don't like directly, mention something that the person could do well in addition to something which could be improved. And I'll talk about three things now. What the evaluator should, should do before the speech, during the speech and after the speech. And evaluator should do before the speech, read the project very, very carefully. While evaluating other, you should know what you are evaluating. What is the project about? What is the speaker going to speak about? Next thing is read the evaluation guide. What are the things that you need to look for while evaluating? What are those specific question in the evaluation guide? Next thing is talk with the speaker, is speaker facing any difficulty? Or speaker has any specific problem regarding the project? Next thing is if you don't have the manual, get manual from the speaker and turn to the appropriate evaluation guide. Next thing, what do you need to do during the speaks as evaluator? Listen carefully and take note of the speech. Next thing is prepare verbal presentation. You know, you always, you have your own presentation style. So you should note down how will you start, what will you do in the body part and how will you conclude and give effective evaluation after the speech. Next thing, what an evaluator should do after the speech. Avoid repeating previous evaluation. If you have already evaluated that speaker and you focused on body language, eye movements, facial expression in the previous speech and it's not that mandatory that you should focus on that part again and again. And it will be too much repetitive and the speaker won't have anything to learn new. Next thing is be specific and don't exaggerate. Be specific to the objective and the purpose of the speech. You need to comment on anything else than objective and the purpose. Next thing is give example, it is the best way to evaluate someone. If you compare something with somebody, then it is easy to learn for the speaker. Suppose you don't like the body language speaker and you can demonstrate how the body language should be. If you don't like the facial expression, you should have, you can demonstrate how the facial expression should be. If the speaker is giving speech on the emotion, how the emotion should have been used. So you should give example to the speaker so that you'll see, you'll see will learn very fastly. Next thing is delivery matters. For example, you are evaluating a speaker who was, who already gave a speech on body language. And as evaluator, you should also have a good delivery. You should also show a good body language so that speaker could learn from you. If you are evaluating a speaker with lazy face and you don't look happy and what you can expect from the speaker to learn from you. And now let's talk about two of the most important technique of evaluation. The first technique is the globe, G L O V E. Next technique I'll be discussing is the modified sandwich approach, which is the updated persona, the sandwich approach that we use to evaluate. Talking about the globe technique, it is the overall framework. It doesn't refer to any particular objective or the purpose of the project. It's some of the objective from zero level to the top level. You know, defining this globe technique in a question is who is saying what to whom with what sort of effects? You know, it's a very good example of a technique developed to look specifically at a number of factor that affect speech quality and the delivery. Evaluator uses technique to provide specific factors regarding the effectiveness of the selected factors. You know, to conduct this globe technique, you need to have a single sheet of paper. And on that set of paper, you need to divide into two parts, first five rows and two columns. In two columns will be the strong points and the areas of improvements. And the five rows will be the gesture, language, organization, voice and energy. And you have to note down of every strong points and every area of improvement for each row. Talking about gesture, you, what you need to focus on this part is where the speaker's body movement and facial expression appropriate? Did the speaker make eye contact with audience? How well did the speaker make use of the space? And next one is the language. Was the language appropriate, vivid and clear and effective for the audience? Where the words and pauses used very effectively? Next thing is organization of the speech. Where the transition between introduction, body and conclusion effective? Was the purpose of the speech clear? Was the structure clear and easy to follow to the audience? Next thing thereafter comes is the voice. You know, it is most important part of a speech. Could everyone in the audience hear the speech? If nobody heard the speech and it has of no use? Was their vocal variety, change the rate, volume and pitch? You know, if you are speaking in the same piece, it might not be that effective. And if you, and if you are giving a humorous speech, you need to change in your piece frequently. And the last but not the least is energy or enthusiasm. Did the speaker show enthusiasm for the topic? For example, if the speaker is speaking on motivation, did the speaker motivate you? If this speaker is speaking on leadership, did the speaker give you some technique on how to be a good leader or how to improve the leadership? Did the speaker harness any nervous energy? You know, for the speaker seem to be very nervous while delivering the speech. Next thing is did the project or evoke appropriate emotion, why? So if the speaker was giving speech on the emotion, did the speaker show some sort of emotion from his speech? You need to make a sheet of paper and five rows that I said earlier, globe, globes. Gesture of ground, language, organization, voice and energy or enthusiasm. Make up five rows and two columns, the strong point for each rows and the areas for improvement. And at the last end of the speech, you can summarize all this and give a perfect evaluation. But this evaluation technique also has some flaws. It focuses, it has some specific five points to focus on. But if the objective are beyond these five words, sometime while talking about say speech development where our project is, where you need to focus on your critical devices. And you might not find the areas to evaluate if you follow only this point. This technique, you know, especially is important for those who want to evaluate for the first time or who want to be a good evaluator. These all are the general point that you must learn before evaluating the speaker. And if you can master this globe technique, then here comes the another technique of evaluation is a modified sandwich approach. You might have heard about sandwich approach. You know, the sandwich approach was good comments, bad comment and good comment again. But you know, there was always a problem with the sandwich approach. What happens is when you hear something good at the beginning and something good at the end of the speech and you tend to forget the areas of improvement or bad comment that evaluator gave you at the end of the speech. There are few criticism that I would like to talk about sandwich space. It is also called as a white was evaluation. If you just focus on the, the great part, you know, the great part of sandwich. If you just focus on the good parts and there is no thing that speaker could get from you in the areas improvement. And you should not say the false of praise evaluation. Even if you don't like the speech, you should not say the speaker is too good. Next thing, this modified sandwich approach is also called the layered evaluation. You know, it consists of the components, praise, areas of improvement and specific position. You know, what I said was in, in traditional sandwich approach, there are the good comment, bad comments and again the good comments. But in this approach, we have praise, which is equal to good comments. Next thing is areas of improvement, in what areas the speaker can improve. And finally, the areas of specific sensation on which area you would like to show the speaker to improve. There are lot of variety of these components. Like in sandwich approach, you have a traditional way of saying good comment at the beginning, bad and finally, again good comments. But in modified sandwich approach, you can deliver your evaluation by, you know, arranging your components in your own way. It, you know, you don't, it's not necessary that you should start from the good comment. You can start from the improvement part or the sensation part and the good comments again. You know, no matter how you choose your structure, your evaluation should be, have three necessary component. You should not forget these components that I'm going to tell you now. First thing, you know, you have seen a sandwich, the bread part, which we call a praise part. It contains the strength exhibited by the speaker. What are the main strong point of the speaker, the strength of the speaker? You know, you should highlight a strong point to encourage the speaker. Next thing is the condiments, you know, amount of fat, amount of protein or amount of calories that we can get from the sandwich. What happens if we have, you know, the amount of fat is too high or amount of calories is too high? You might end up getting fat. Next, you know, this, you, in evaluation technique, this is called as areas of improvement. What amount of condiments should be there to let the speaker know, you know, in what area they can improve? So you need to focus on the condiment part as areas of improvement. Next thing is specific sensation. You have seen meat or vegetable or cheese. What should be the amount of meat, vegetable, cheese in the sandwich? You know, if there is only meat, it doesn't make sense and again, if there is vegetable only, it doesn't make sense again. And if there is no cheese, then you might not end up eating the sandwich. So this is, it is a specific sensation for the, you know, speaker, to help the speaker to know how they can improve. And if a specific evaluation will benefits everyone, it's not only benefit you, it also benefit the speaker. It also benefits the, evaluate, it will benefit the every audience. And next is the future audience. It means if you evaluate a speaker and he tends to learn all these thing that evaluated, now he has focused on the areas of improvement that he suggested and finally he is a good speaker. And there might be people who want to be a good speaker looking at that speaker. So they are called the future audience. So in summary, there are few points that I want to highlight is that if you want to be a good evaluator, you should not leave this point behind. The first thing is learn objective of the speaker. It is very, very important that you should know what you are going to evaluate and what are the point you are focusing on. Next thing is consider the skill level of a speaker. You know, sometimes there might be speaker who are inexperienced and sometimes there might be speaker who are really experienced. And evaluating these two speaker is really, really different. You know, you can use globe technique to evaluate inexperienced speaker whereas this technique might not be enough to evaluate both speaker who are highly experienced and giving speeches. Next thing is you need to focus on take advantage of available tools. If you are facing any problem in evaluating, you can ask always other, your co-members. You can ask feedback from others. You can use a specific evaluation template before the speech, you can design a template. You can focus on the objective and purpose of a speech and fill up the template accordingly. And utilize audio or video recording. If the speaker wants to send you video recording, you know, beforehand for your mentorship, then you can focus on that part also. So that it will be easy for you to evaluate on the specific points of this skill. And next thing is you should be truthful. If you don't like the speech, do not say that you like the speech or the speech was really wonderful. Instead, it will damage your credibility and the character. You know, there will be nothing for the speaker to learn. There will be nothing for the speaker to improvise. And next thing is express your opinion. An evaluation is just your opinion. Be specific to our objective, be specific to our the purpose of the speech. And you should not go beyond that, just express your opinion, whether you like it or not, whether you don't like it and mix all those and deliver at the end of. And use example, as I said earlier, using example is a powerful tool while evaluating. Examples are, you know, if you use example, it's very easy for speaker to imitate that example. So again, summarizing about the globe technique that I said, you need to make five rows and two columns. And in sandwich, modified sandwich technique, again, you need to divide your sheet of paper into four parts. The first thing will be the strong points, next thing will be the areas of improvement, next thing will be the specific sensation and finally again, it's up to you. You can summarize by telling the good points again. So if you break down the speech of the speaker into four parts, strong points, areas of improvement, specific sensation and again the good point. It is the best way you can evaluate in a speaker and there will be more and more that speaker can learn from you, the audience can learn from you and finally, the future idea can learn from you. And in this way, you can be a good evaluator as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Pawan Josi for sharing your ideas. This will be benefited to those members who are preparing themselves to be evaluator and guest. I, I hope you have learned how the evaluation. Uh, I, I hope you have learned how the evaluation, evaluations go on. Uh, to evaluate in the speaker's speech. So moving on, I would like to thank you to every speakers who have supported me, supported meeting. To have the sharing solutions, every speakers have done this job, sharing their ideas. So I would like to, before going to the evaluation session, I would like to ask you one question. What is the best interest you get while you invest? Where do you get the best interest from? Do you know?
Insurance.
Uh, uh, thank you, Speaker Subra. Anyone? Interest you get on from?
Hello, Yoganraja sir, hello. You're going to say, I'd like to add up something.
Yes, please.
The best interest we get interest is knowledge investment, in my opinion.
Yes.
Whenever anything and call us, the best interest is that we gain from there.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, I was about to tell this, um, I don't know where did you did that. Yes, of course, on knowledge and skills, that is the best interest you get in your life. And thank you, Subra, for adding that, that thing that you get interest and you get bonus from insurance as well. So, uh, before moving, yes, it is the time for evaluation session. Now, I would like to, uh, welcome and you all are requested to help me welcoming the overall. Evaluator and meeting evaluator today is Speaker Manuza Debkota, who is also the secretary of Agora Speakers Bhutwal. And sees the banker by profession as per my knowledge and help me welcoming Speaker Manuza. And, and for the benefit, for the benefit, for the knowledge of timer, please note down the direct evaluator's time is three minutes. Uh, indirect evaluator's time is two minutes and overall evaluator's time is six minutes. Over to you, Speaker Manuza.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you, Agora Speaker Yoganraja sir, for handing over the platform. Okay, now we are moving forward for our overall session, as I have mentioned, that overall evaluation is segregated into three parts. First will be doing the evaluation session where the speakers and the evaluation, evaluating the speakers. The second one is the indirect session where we'll be evaluating the grammar, figurework counter and hot topic session. And last but not the least, we'll be evaluating the overall meeting. So whenever we give any exam, we wait for results, right? And we get scared, we get nervous, but Agora speakers, this is only the platform where, when we get fail or when we negative result, we get beneficial. Because we have so much room for improvement and even we can't guess, so let's have some feedback and empower ourselves through this platform. So moving forward, I'd like to call Agora Speaker Sagar Gautam, evaluate our Agora Speaker Sabin Khairal. Sagar sir, are you hearing me?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Agora Speaker Manuza Debkota. So in today's, uh, meeting, I was, uh, assigned to evaluate our, uh, versatile speaker. Our, our speaker Sabin Khairal. The project, uh, was, uh, this process. The goal of the project was to prepare a speech and deliver a speech on a different aspect. Maybe informative, persuasive or entertaining or, uh, demonstrative, so on. Hearing the, uh, this by Sabin Khairal, I could clearly realize that you're trying to persuade the. Audience, to be, to be strong. The message in this speech was to be strong, right? He has mentioned, he has supported with the different kind of examples. Uh, you know, the takeaway, uh, message in this speech was being strong for their existence. Am I audible to everyone?
Yes, yes.
The takeaway message in the speech was being strong to, uh, for the existence, whether it be, uh, he has, uh, quoted some example like, uh. Uh, he has differentiated between the line or a vulture, whether a student being in examinations. Whether you are unwanted, feeling unwanted in a crowd, you need to be always strong, right? So these are the major point really liked about him, the way he, uh, delivered this speech, the frequency in the voice tone, it was quite good. He was emphasizing the, uh, the best part is he was emphasizing the, um, being strong for the existence, right? And he also gave an example of, uh, international leaders like Nelson Mandela and King Luther. King Luther for being, uh, and, uh, you know, adding up with, uh, being strong. The mental strength is required, is a dominant part for strong, right? So these were the, uh, very much good point he has added. And, uh, so how would be strong? And the next was a weakness for learning. To be a strong, we need to face our weakness, learn from our weakness, these are the good points. However, uh, I tell that, uh. Uh, there was kind of a missing organization in the, uh. Uh, you know, the supportive masses or the supportive, if he could have, uh, organized the supportive points, then it would be very good. And I hope, uh, he'll be doing, uh, delivering a good speech in our upcoming sessions. Thank you.
We thank you, yes, Agora Speaker Sagar Gautam for your constructive feedback. Now, moving forward, I'd like to call our speaker to evaluate, our speaker Subra Khairal, Subra, your pardon.
Um, yeah, thank you, General Valuator, um, Deprman. Uh, so here, looking into this speech by Agora Speaker Subra Paudel. He had five core objective this morning, you know, to incorporate in his speech, organization, vocal variety, expression, storytelling and entertaining. As a seasoned speaker, very experienced speaker, Subra Paudel has always been good at delivery. Hmm, and this morning was not an exception. He was loud, audible, clear in his message and he made a remarkable, you know, presentation as such. His or, organization was good, vocal variety was nicely put into the bundle. Expressions are always smiling, very expressive, uh, he could do the justice to his expression in the delivery. Now, uh, there are two other objectives on the storytelling and entertaining. And in the part of the storytelling, there were micro stories and, uh, he related them to his speech, core objective of the speech. And that was really good. But while it comes to the entertaining, I don't know, Subra Paudel, you know, the speaker Subra Paudel, while he's too much in a home, you know. His speech was more of ideal lead than on a general size of humor. I guess there is some kind of scope where a bit of humor could be added or maybe that speech could be more entertaining in upcoming days. Otherwise, uh, he's a accomplished speaker, uh, he has always been really, very good. We always love to hear, hmm, Agora Speaker Subra Paudel come back time and again to the club and, and deliver wonderful speeches like this. Wish all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Ravi for your constructive feedback. So moving forward with indirect evaluation, uh, in, in indirect evaluation, we'll be evaluating the grammarian part and feelable counter part. Timer will be, uh, at the last, so I'd like to call, um. I'd like to call Agora Speaker Pratik to evaluate the grammarian report. Agora Speaker Pratik.
Okay, thank you, Agora Valuator. So, uh, for the grammarian today, I didn't, I found two big things that I wanted to address. First of all was about punctuation and ending your sentences. So many speakers, I found out that you don't end your sentences, whatever, keep on adding, you think so. And then because and using, you know, conjunctions or, you know, sentence connectors, you're just not ending sentences and you're just going on and on. Now, the way to make this better is having gaps in your speeches. It's, it's, it's good to have short, narrow gaps to end sentences as well as for emphasis. For commas, give a short gap, for full stops, give a little bit longer gap and stop and then speak again so that you can, you actually end your sentences. And are not just speaking like a machine gun, da, 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 just calm down, stop. The second one is the using, the use of ing in your words. So many examples I found, so that when I, when I selecting what we sharing, I talking, she was, she is walking. So many say ing forms are being used, you know, in the, in the wrong way, without the use of auxiliary forms. She was walking, she, I was talking, we were going, something like that. So the use of auxiliary words also, I found a lot of those. The word for day was not used by anybody, uh, including myself, so okay. And I didn't really think a lot about good use of grammar today, I was just thinking, how am I supposed to word this? The two problems that I found, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Pratik for your constructive feedback. So moving forward, I'd like to call Agora Speaker Reka, uh, Rekha Maariya. To provide a constructive feedback on feelable counter.
Yes ma'am. I'm audible.
Yes.
Yes, good morning again. Today I am feeler or counter, so I am going to giving report. First, hot topic session, Agorian Rosni Pandey, two ah, on um, no long pause, no short pause and no repetition or. Uh, Agorian Sachin Tandon, two ah, one um, no long pause, no short pause and no repetition or. And third Agorian Tulaja Dahal, ma'am, just one word, so give her big clap please. And second, prepare session, Agorian Sabin Khairal, one short pause, two repetition or, no ah, no um, and no long pause. And Agorian Subhat Pauril sir, one short pause, one repetition or, no ah, no um, and no long pause. And Agorian Pavan Josi, two short pause, no long pause, no um, no ah, and no repetition or, thank you.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Rekha ma'am for your constructive feedback and very the calm, the calm way you delivered it. So now, uh, thank you, and I'd like to move forward with the overall evaluation report. And now I'm going to evaluate the overall, uh. So I'll be starting with our meeting leader, as always, he's an enthusiastic person. And he's very, very much interactive and audio centric person. So one, one thing I want to add up is, I think before starting the meeting, as we all, all of us know that. We are, uh, we, we just deliver the meeting etiquettes all the time. So now it's time to deliver the virtual meeting etiquette, like what, what things we have to do and what things we. The best things, meeting leader will say all this things that it will be very, very best, like muting the, uh, muting the videos and stopping the videos when one is talking, yes mute. This type of things, whatever we have, let's make it and let's share it that thing. Because even I did mistake, many of us has done mistakes, so it has created some disturbance in our, uh, in our meeting session. So moving forward, I'm going to talk about, uh, feelable counter, Rekha ma'am have done a very, very good job. I like the way, the calm way that she has all the things. I'm going to evaluate the grammarian, so, uh, thank you so much for the constructive feedback, Agora Speaker's Pratik. But I think whenever you say something, um, uh, something like grammatical error or something like, if you're struck with feedback. The smile on your face, I think that you have to avoid, because if someone is committing the mistake, you should not smile like it feels like you are just smiling at them. So let's have this type of body language always, uh, create some this confusion among us. So moving for our topic session, involve a round of applauses to her. Because she has given such a creative topic and all of us have participated so well. There were so many things to describe on our mind, but I could not speak though. But the topic was very attractive and the session was also interactive. And the way, the ways she have deal the whole session was also very, very good. And now moving forward, we, uh, I'd like to talk about the speakers, uh, speakers were very good. Yeah, one thing I want to add up is, uh, as we are talking on virtual way, it's not flat to face, but we are talking virtual. There is something difference in between the virtual meeting or virtual sessions and face to face sessions, like. If I'm dealing without any body language or eye interaction or something like that, only I'm giving the tele, like being a tradition and delivering the speech. The audience gets bored or they just feel monotone, okay, because we are not face to face, we are not typing or face to face communication. So this type of things we have to improve, because whatever the speech was, was very good, but not only in this case, but overly. But if we use body language, eye contact, I, I have seen, where to, where, where we have to look at eyes, we are looking, we are looking at the camera. So the things, the difference that should be, uh, at some point we have to look at the screen, at some point we have to look at the chat. In some point we have to use our hand, in some point have to use the pauses. Though my pauses are very less in the speech, but still we have to improve all these things. So this point I think we have to improve, because in today's, uh, in today's session, I found these things were lacking. The speakers were very, but still these things were just lacking on. We're talking about the evaluator, they have valued you very well and I want to go toward the calling Josi sir, our president. Uh, the video, the delivery, the speech that he have given was very cool, please give a round of applauses to him from all of our side. But one thing I want to, uh, I want to suggest, it's not, uh, it's not a constructive feedback, but it's a suggestion that this type of fruitful video. This type of fruitful video which makes our meeting better, I think this should be shared few days ago of the meeting. Nothing is late till now, nothing, but still, if those things were shared two, three days ago, then today's eval, would evaluate in that way. Okay, but nothing is that, we will be improving, all of us will be improving in coming days, but this videos make something different in our, in our sessions also. So thank you, again, I want to thank Pawan sir for such a constructive feedback and ideas like globes, sandwich feedback was always there, but the globes. Uh, I, I was also not aware of that, that it was very fruitful. And despite of a regular meeting, today's meeting was some very knowledge enhancing meeting. So now I need to move forward with, uh, timing, I've started the meeting at eight, three, right? But while we are late for three minutes, all of us were there with no reason, again, late for three minutes. Let's try to start at eight, let's come at, uh, eight, uh, seven, five, four, five or seven fifty. Let's get prepared and let's start at eight, because, uh, every day there is improvement, there is room for improvement, means why to get late for three minutes for no reason? So with this, I do, uh, thank every, I, I want to thank everyone and I'd like to call our timer on the stage or on the screen, let's say. I'd like to call you, Srinjol, please.
So good morning, everyone. Thank you. So in today's meeting, I was being timer, I reported all the timing reports. In hot topic speech session, Speaker Rosni Pandey took one minute fifty nine seconds, whereas her allocated time was two minutes. And Speaker Sachin Tandon took forty three seconds, which is very less, whereas he had not reached the allocated time. And Agora Speaker Tulaja Dahal took one minute and twenty one seconds. In prepared topic speech session, Agora Speaker Sabin Khairal took five minutes forty eight seconds, whereas his allocated time was seven minutes. And AS Subra Paudel took nine minutes thirty seven seconds, his allocated time was ten minutes. AS Pavan Josi took sixteen minutes and one second, his allocated time was twelve minutes. Indirect evaluation session, Sagar Gautam took three minutes and one second. And Agora Speaker Ravi, what tried took one minute and fifty second. In indirect evaluation session, Grammarian Pratik Sharma Khairal took one minute forty seven sec, forty seven seconds. Feelable counter, Agora Speaker Rekha Dulal took fifty six seconds, all located time is two minutes, which is very less. In overall evaluator, AS Manuza Debkota took four minutes and forty seven seconds. And me myself timer, I took one minute and thirty seven seconds, thank you.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Kintur, for wonderful delivery answer for making your time yourself. And now moving forward, at the, at the end of the session, I'd like to call Agora Speaker Pavan Josi for closing remarks.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Manuja, for inviting me for closing remark and it was a wonderful seeing you all. And before I wrap up, Agora Speaker Yogananda, do you have something that you want to say?
Uh, yeah, I was expecting to.
Okay, please go ahead.
The session to me, nothing, nothing to say, but I would like to thank you everyone before that. To adding something for our theme of the meeting that is setting solutions. That when you are lockdown time and difficult situation, just have few points of daily routine. That I would like to add some five, five points here, that start your day in a positive way, one thing, one. And next one is exercise regularly, that, that counts, the yoga, meditation exercises. And eat healthy and smart food, that is, that could be another point. And another is get enough and quality slip that you always love to have. And the next one is share your ideas, views, solutions and even, even if the problems are there to solve together. So with this, with this, there is rightly said, musta, musta raho, besta raho, that thing. Let's enjoy the life and thank you everyone, special thanks to Rolltakers. Special thanks to Bhutwal Agora Club and all the members and guests. Special thanks to those guests who have participated and, and shared their times like Sachin Tandanji, Sanjayji, Asmitaji and everyone. Thank you so much, over to you, the speaker, Pavan Josi, the president.
Thank you, Agora Speaker Yogananda, for taking a role of wonderful meeting evaluator and huge round of applause to you. And it's, you know, it's a wonderful session that everyone could learn from you how to be a good meeting leader. And this was the perfect example of being, you know, how a meeting leader should be. You know, talking about the meeting is a wonderful seeing you all from all over the Nepal, from we had our speaker members from Bhutwal, Pokhara, we have from Colunki. And it was wonderful seeing you all and we hope to see you in upcoming session also. And from talking about Agora Speaker Nepal and we have some good news coming to all of you, to all the Agora members from all over the Nepal. And we'll be sharing it very soon. And thank you all of you from, again for participating in this session. We hope to see you in next session as well. And by this, I would like to end up session, if there is any volunteer, please for the meeting leader, please, you know, raise your hand in our chatroom. And thank you again, all of you for participating and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, have a good day, bye bye.
Okay, bye bye.
Oh, group photo, any group photo idea, where is that? Speaker Pratik.
Okay, so.
Thank you so much.
Please give a.
Group photo.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, bye bye.